Good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our regular city council meeting for April 4th, 2022. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Harding?
Here.
Ganfield?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Grab my agenda here. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 21st?
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded, all in favor, or excuse me, there's any comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So the one item I have for special presentation tonight is just a proclamation recognizing April 17th through 23rd, 2022 as citywide cleanup week. And that proclamation reads, whereas the proper disposal of trash, appliances, furniture, hazardous materials, and electronics is vital to the safety, health, and welfare of Cedar Falls residents, and whereas pristine parks, sidewalks, roadways, waterways, and public spaces are a great source of enjoyment and pride for residents and visitors alike, and whereas the city's neighborhood associations and service clubs have successfully carried out past spring cleanup events throughout the city, and these efforts are most worthy of celebration and duplication citywide, and whereas the city of Cedar Falls, the city's neighborhood associations, Green Iowa Americor, and other environmentally minded civic organizations are providing resources, education, and materials for a successful cleanup of Cedar Falls and the days surrounding Earth Day on April 22nd, now therefore I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 17th through 23rd, 2022 as citywide cleanup week throughout the city, and I encourage citizens to organize and participate in cleanup events and to take advantage of this opportunity to easily dispose of refuse, bulk items, electronics, and hazardous materials for the betterment of our city and the environment. Sign this 29th day of March, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green. So typically we'll have a person coming forward to receive the proclamation. This is the entire city that is part of this as well, so I'll give this proclamation to the entire city. We will have a note from Public Works if that's okay later this evening, or would you want to just do that now, Director Schragi, just to say how cleanup week? Sorry, I put you on the spot there. I do, I have the press release about.
Sure. I guess any organizations or groups that would like to come forward for a specific corridor, we'll provide gloves and bags, pick up locations to pick up the bags after they're done with that. We also are scheduling some city staff on the afternoon of the April 21st on select corridors to do cleanup as well.
And there are organizations like North Cedar Neighborhood Association has had a cleanup event for years, and they're doing theirs on the 23rd up in North Cedar. So if you are looking for organizations to join in with, I would definitely check with neighborhood associations and areas around, or just bring together some friends and family and go out on your own in your neighborhood, so.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, did I see it though, like if an individual wants to do it, they can come to, they can come to Public Works and then drop them off at like certain park shelters, right, during that week? Is, did I see that wrong on the Facebook page?
As far as bags and things after they're done?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There'll be select areas where if we know the area where they're collecting the garbage, if we know where they're dropping those bag locations, we can pick them up.
Yeah, and it says in the press release, once filled, the blue bags can be deposited near the shelter areas at Overman Park, Holmes Park, Clay Street Park, Serley Park, Neighbors Park, and Pfeiffer Park, and then other areas, just contact Public Works at 273-8629 to arrange a special pickup. So thank you very much for that clarification. And with that, that takes us over into public forum, where speakers have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. So does anyone from the gallery wish to speak on a topic tonight? Ms. Beach, name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Rosemary Beach, 5018 Sage Road, Western Home Village, and I'm back again with a little information on the house, Serley House of U&amp;I. This is the new U&amp;I book for the alumni, and it's very well done, and it has a wonderful article in here, it says, preserving faith. And they're working on a church in Waterloo to preserve it. I think that's quite lovely of them. These are a few of the highlights of what's in here. Planning has since been underway on how to properly restore its iconic architecture and utilize the space mindfully. This is for the church in Waterloo. Thanks to the guidance of key members from the Coalition and the University of Northern Iowa. Two people from the U&amp;I Institute are working on it. Several U&amp;I professors have also been involved in the process as coordinator of the U&amp;I's interior design. The possibilities for student participation is noted. Programming support has only grown from there. Let's see, to learn about the history and culture and community right where they're learning is wonderful. This is our role as educators to help co-create with students lived experience where they can learn and grow. Down here it says, there is a rich history in Cedar Valley, even on this campus. Well, that's not well documented, commented one student. As future educators, we want to help tell our students about the history of their own community. Down here further, we need the hard truth about what's going on with this building. That's the one in Waterloo. Then what does the community want? They want suggestions, is what he wants. And lastly, in a large picture showing the inside of the church, this is our role as educators to help co-create with the students' lived experiences where they can learn and grow. So I think that's quite interesting. So they were asking, hey, what do you want to see done with the building? So they're giving you an opportunity to let the students know what you'd like to be done with that building in Waterloo. And I said, just quickly said, I got home before this was open last time, and I had a feeling there was questions about why on earth I am up here doing this during weekly meetings, because this is the one place I can get the information out. I'm very interested in historical preservation. I was on the first board. I think it's important to our city to note that. So I'm simply saying, one good thing did happen. If you notice, you did, one of your council people asked for the university to come and talk this with you for one evening. I don't think that's ever happened. Somebody who's maybe older than I would know, but that's questionable. So in any intent, something has come of it, and I hope it is the opportunity to have more involvement with what goes on on that campus. I believe that the U&amp;I's past is our past. We put them here. We are the community who asked them to come here when it was a normal, done being a soldier's home for children. And so what I'm trying to get through to people, this is a big deal for Cedar Falls, it could be, and I wish, and I'll probably be back again, but the reason I'm here is specifically because this is where, my only forum to get it out. And as you see, there's nothing in here about the building on the campus. This is about a church in Waterloo. So you know somebody of their cares about preservation also. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, Derek Pisens, 406 North Division Street, Cedar Falls.
Seeing none, then I'll consider public forum closed, and bring us over to special order of business. Item three, public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the College Hill Parking Lot Improvements Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass, and Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed tonight?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll start off with staff comments, and we have for the public hearing, Dave Wiki, speaking for us tonight.
All right, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's public hearing is for the College Hill Parking Lot Improvement Project. This project includes restoration of approximately 45,000 square feet of asphalt cement parking lots in the College Hill District. Work includes removal of the existing asphalt surface and placement of a new hot mix asphalt in its place. Also included are some spot repairs of curb and gutter, and then pavement markings to finish that off. The total estimated cost for construction of this project is $150,252.20, and the project is funded by the College Hill district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiki. And do we have anyone who wishes to speak in public comment on this tonight? Seeing none, then I'll consider the public hearing closed and move us over to item, or Part E, which is a resolution approving and adopting the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the College Hill Parking Lot Improvements Project. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none, then I see that we have a motion and second, and this requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us to item four, which is a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to principal permitted uses in the M1 light industrial district. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none, then I'll consider the public hearing closed and move us over to item, or Part E, which is a resolution approving and adopting the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the College Hill Parking Lot Improvements Project. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none, then I see that we have a motion and second, and this requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us to item four, which is a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to principal permitted uses in the M1 light industrial district. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, and Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed on this item?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. For staff comments tonight, we have Ms. Karen Howard. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay, good evening. This is an ordinance to consider allowing daycare uses in the M1 light industrial district. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. There's a great need in the community for quality daycare, particularly in locations close to employment centers. And our industrial parks are some of our largest employment centers in the community. After consideration, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, then I will consider the public hearing closed for item four, and that brings us to E, passing an ordinance amending Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to principal permitted uses in the M1 light industrial district upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So motion and seconded, and open for discussion and questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanted to double check the verbiage, and maybe this is a question for Kevin, but the way I interpreted the verbiage on Section 1A, the "and," does that mean it has to be a permitted principal use as well as the stipulation about daycare? Should that be "or," or am I misinterpreting it? Sure. It just says, section I is where said use is incidental to a permitted principal use and to daycare uses with the following standards. Is that an inclusive?
Yes, it's "and." Sorry.
You're good.
So it says, the use is incidental to the permitted principal use and, so that means both.
Okay.
So is the intent that it is meant to be both, or that it could be one or the other? That's why I make sure we're matching what we?
I think it means you have to do one and two, right?
That was my only concern, is if this is a principal use daycare facility, an institution for human care, then it's an outlawed principal use, and this has to be an exception, it's either or. That's how I interpreted it, I just want to make sure that we didn't pass something that was a sticky bit.
So this is the section where it says where daycare uses are allowed, so the ordinance already allows daycare centers that are incidental, meaning accessory to, so for example, Target Center could have its own internal daycare center. So we're not trying to disallow that, we wanted that to continue, so, and they would be allowed as a principal use, so that's paragraph number two.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Ganfield?
It's just a list of allowed uses where they're allowed, so.
Right, and I'm not a legal expert, so I'm taking Kevin's opinion on it to make sure that this provides for Community United to function as a principal permitted daycare and incidental to other permitted primary uses for other situations. I feel like this one excludes the existing daycare.
There is a double exception here, the way I'm looking at it. So it's except that no occupancy permit shall be issued for those things, except, and I think it's clarifying what an institution for human care is, and so it says, so it's basically saying, any use permitted in C3 district, and the intent by using exception is, it's incidental to a permitted principal use and a daycare qualifies, basically, so I think it does, or we're hoping it does.
And also, a daycare applies, like is that how it's been read?
As long as it's, verbiage is correct by your eyes, I'm good with it.
Perfect. Okay, great. Other questions, comments?
All right, another thing I wanted to throw out, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The only other thing I wanted to throw out is, given the timeline of the applicant for this exclusion, they've got some grant money that comes up in June, would this be an issue where we'd want to set aside the rules and have a third and final consideration tonight, or would it suit the rest of council to go ahead and just let it have three readings?
I believe in the past when we've had something similar to this, we've had the first reading, and then when it came up the second week, then we dispense with the rules on the second time, and that way we got it through in two weeks, but still offered that chance for public.
Perfect.
So that'd be okay?
As long as that works, I'm good with it.
Sure. And that would still allow quite a bit of time for that June grant requirement? Okay, any other questions or thoughts on that? All right, so it's been motioned and seconded, passing an ordinance amending Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to principal permitted uses in the M1 district upon its first consideration, and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we're headed over to old business, which, number five, is passing ordinance 3006 amending Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to increasing parking ratios for residential mixed-use and multi-unit buildings in the downtown character district to .75 parking spaces per bedroom, but not less than one parking space per unit, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion and seconded, open for additional council discussion desired. Seeing none, then motion and seconded, and requires a roll call, excuse me, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, now with that, motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And six is passing ordinance 3007 amending Chapter 7 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances relative to the discharge of stormwater or groundwater into the city's sanitary sewer system upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion on it? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none, then it's been motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So ordinance 3007 does pass, and brings us over to the consent calendar, where these items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item seven through 11? Okay, seeing none, any from the public wish to pull one of the items seven through 11? Okay, seeing none? So I'll read those items. Seven is approving recommendations of the mayor relative to appointment of members to boards and commissions, and I do very much want to thank them for their service. Item eight is receiving and filing city council work session minutes of March 21st. Nine is receiving a communication, filing a communication from Civil Service Commission relative to the certified list for the position of a maintenance worker. Ten is receiving and filing departmental monthly reports for February 2022, and then eleven is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those do pass collectively, and it takes us to the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item 12 through 18? Okay, seeing none, does anyone from the public request to pull an item 12 through 18? Seeing none, then I'll read those items as well. Twelve is a resolution approving and accepting four permanent public access easements for the River Place Properties LC. Thirteen is a resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for the purchase of a dump truck chassis for the Public Works Department. Fourteen is a resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for the purchase of a generator for the Water Reclamation Division. Fifteen is a resolution receiving and filing bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Owen Contracting for the Lake Street Trail Project. Sixteen is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Municipal Pipe Tool Company for the 2022 CDBG sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Seventeen is resolution receiving and filing and setting April 18th as the date of a public hearing for the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the West 27th Street Reconstruction Project. Eighteen is a resolution setting April 18th, 2022, as the date of a public hearing for the proposed conveyance of interest in certain real estate to Cedar Falls Community School District. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us over to ordinances, which nineteen is passing an ordinance amending Chapter 11 Housing of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Housing Commission upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. If we could get a 30-second infomercial from staff just on what this generally does, would that be Director Sheets?
Sure. What you have in the packet is a proposal for the Housing Commission to reduce from seven to five members, and that's related to, actually when we were looking into it, part of it was a little bit about getting people to participate and getting enough board and commission members, but then when we started to look into it, our planning staff saw that by state code, actually based on our population, we had too many members altogether. So this will help us comply with state code, as well as hopefully allow us to have a full commission.
Thank you. Any council discussion on this? Any from the public? Okay, so it's been motion and seconded to pass ordinance amending Chapter 11 relative to the Housing Commission upon its first consideration, and this requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then the last ordinance is twenty, passing the ordinance amending Chapter 23 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to prohibiting parking for the College Hill Farmers Market upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Again, a little infomercial from staff, just to say what this is going to be about?
You want to go ahead, Jackie?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mayor, we were, we received a request from the College Hill Farmers Market and also the College Hill Partnership, basically just changing the day from Thursdays to Wednesdays, they thought it would be a better fit for them, so. And I believe we may have someone here from the Farmers Market as well, so.
Okay, to answer questions, all right, excellent. So do we have any questions for staff or for our rep? Okay. Then with that, it's been motioned and seconded, and, or anything from the public, I should ask too, I'm sorry. Okay, so no comments from the public. Motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we go over to bills and claims. Is there a motion to allow bills and claims for April 4th?
Second.
Motion and seconded, any discussion from council, from the public? Okay, seeing none, then a motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any council referrals tonight? Okay, seeing none, then moves us over to council updates. Do we have any updates from council tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to put a little quick thank you and plug. So I, this Saturday, had the honor of riding around with police, with Lieutenant Marty Beckner, for what would be my third ride-along. So I've done all three shifts. I started with a third shift ride-along, I did a second shift, and then I did a Saturday first shift. Thankfully, it was a pretty uneventful shift, but it was all, continues to be, I learn best by immersing myself in, you know, a job obviously I don't do. I feel like that's good for me as a councilperson, but also good for me as a citizen, to just be reminded of what our police officers do every day and have a good conversation with staff. This Wednesday, I will hang out with FIRE for their regularly scheduled training. This will be the second training I've been privileged to hang out with them. This past Saturday, as I was getting there, FIRE had gone out, I believe on a call, I think there was a car in the ditch or something Saturday morning. Anyway, they, FIRE staff was also there, getting their equipment put back and ready for the next call. So I guess my main thing is, is I want to thank staff, first of all, for having me. I don't know why I always get nervous that I'm bothering them, but they always assure me I'm not. And I also want to make sure that I encourage, you know, as this conversation continues about our public safety department, which is so vital to our community safety, I hope to encourage all of us to take some time to make sure we're hanging out and, you know, taking time with the staff who our decisions directly impact. So just a little blurb there.
Thank you. And that is part of the strategic plan for public safety, that they, one of the items is to have elected officials encourage officials to ride along. So certainly, to Councilmember Dunn's point, it's not a bother at all, but an important oversight sense to be able to get out and see what they do every day. So very much encourage that for council to get involved with that, if we haven't done so yet. They don't even charge you.
No.
Any other council updates?
I wanted to say one thing. I was trying to find the date, but I couldn't find it. But I wanted to say a big thanks to Catherine Sogard, because she's resigning or resigned freshly from the College Hill Partnership. So I know she-
It's the last day, the 19th.
Yeah, it's coming up soon. That's why I was trying to find that. But either way, I just wanted to say thanks for all the service, and it was great to work with her.
Other updates?
Mr. Mayor?